Councilmember Thorson is absent. Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Cole is absent. Mayor Furlong?
Here. We do have a quorum, so motion to adopt the agenda.
Your Honor.
By Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong.
Like that tonight.
The other one or the other tonight. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a few topics here and I'll turn it over to City Manager Brian Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. First up is the MMPA Wholesale Power Contract Extension. We have two gentlemen here from Avon Energy slash MMPA. The Chief Operating Officer, which is Andrew Er, and we have Senior Vice President David Niles here as well to discuss the extension and with the PowerPoint. So I'd like to turn it over to you guys, please.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having us. My name is David Niles. As Brian said, I'm a Senior Vice President with Avon Energy. We manage MMPA. And what we thought we'd do tonight is go through the presentation that we gave at our annual meeting a couple of months ago. So that's why it says July 26th up there. This is the presentation as we gave it. We had an annual dinner meeting where we invite city council members, elected officials, city staff, utility folks, and just try and give them a sense of MMPA, where we are, where we're going. And so I'll take the first part, and Andrew will finish up. Feel free to ask questions if you'd like. So we're going to talk today about MMPA's mission, who we are, our history, and how North St. Paul's been an important part of that history, what we've done, and our plans for the future. So MMPA's mission, there are two pillars: to provide power that's reliable and to provide power that's competitively priced. And in addition to that, we want to create value for MMPA and for its members like North St. Paul. So just to give you a sense of who MMPA's members are, there's 12 members, sort of semi situated around the Twin Cities metro area, and then kind of mainly off to the south and west a little bit. And then we've got East Grand Forks up there on the northwest corner of the state as an outlier.
When's the last time somebody actually joined the consortium, or whatever you would call it?
The most recent customer or member started taking power in 2018. They made the decision to buy power in 2013, but started buying because contracts in the utility industry take a long time to take effect because of such a capital-intensive nature. And that's part of why we're talking about a contract extension, you know, a ways out. In fact, one of the graphs I have in just a second, I'll show you that.
Okay.
Yeah. So just to talk about the history, MMPA was founded in 1992. North St. Paul was one of the eight founding members of the agency. All had been former Xcel Energy customers, or Northern State's power as it was at the time. We started supplying power to members in 1995. East Grand Forks and Shakopee joined in 2004, and Buffalo joined a year later. Elk River, our newest member, joined in 2013. And in 2020, we had this plan of having a big celebration for 25 years of success, and then the pandemic hit. So this shows how strong the agency's growth has been over the last quarter century and more. So we started up in the middle of 95, summer of 95, and then had some growth there when we had a full year in 96 and 97. And then that first big bump is the 2005, 2006 time period when Shakopee, Buffalo, and East Grand Forks all started taking power. And then you can see that our agency members have had quite a bit of organic growth as well. So all of that, from sort of the middle up until that last big bump, is just growth in residential and business customers in our, at the time, 11-member communities. And then that last big jump is when Elk River started buying power on October 1st of 2018. And then you can see a little dip from 19 to 20 with the pandemic, and then '21, we had a nice recovery there. So one of the main things I want to demonstrate here is that our rates are competitive with Xcel. And I think it's important for me to state here that what we're showing are wholesale rates, because that's what MMPA is, is a wholesale power provider. You guys at the city level do certain things that add costs and end up to the ultimate retail rates that your customers see. But what's in our control, and so how we track our competitiveness, is Xcel, is sort of the main utility in the area, bordering most of our members, including you guys. And so what you can see here, this graph goes back to 1998, and what you can see is that forever, in all years except for two, 2007 and 2008, our rates were either pretty much right the same or quite a bit lower than Xcel. And 2007, 2008 was the last time gas prices went really high, like they are right now. And our rates went higher, and we said, "We're not going to let that happen again." And we've built quite a resource portfolio since then, which I'll talk to you about in just a minute. But the main takeaway from this graph is that since 2009, our rates have been consistently lower than our competitive benchmark, and we expect them to continue to be that way. So I want to talk about how the agency has matured and changed over time. So when we started supplying power in 1995, you can see that all of our capacity came from coal. There were two contracts we had, contracts with other utilities. We didn't own a coal plant. It was a virtual agency at the time. Starting in 2000, we expanded some hydro into that, again through contracts with our neighbors to the north in Canada. Starting in 2005 is when the agency had its first owned generation, and that's natural gas, and that's the orange there. And the bulk of the agency's capacity since 2005 has been natural gas. The other thing, and what you can see is, I want to, two other things I want to point out. One is that coal was phased out completely by 2015. And the second is how renewables started in 2011. You don't see it on here, but in 2011 is when our first utility-scale wind farm went into place. And how, from 15 to 20, it grew. And then as we look into next year, we have a wind farm that's projected to come online here in the next few months that's going to even further expand our renewable capacity. So when you change that to, on an energy basis, because energy is what drives our costs more than capacity, this goes back to 2006. And what you can see is that, you know, the purple is market purchases. And MMPA has been fairly reliant on market purchases from 2006. Even into 2020, it was still a significant portion. But as our natural gas generation has grown, and as our renewables are growing and continuing to grow into 2023, our dependence on market purchases, and therefore a lot of our energy price risk, is going to go down. So I want to talk now about our power supply, and you can see how these two columns align with the two pillars of MMPA's mission. We have our conventional resources, and when we say conventional, that means they're fossil fuel fire, which means natural gas. We have three of those from 2001, 2005, and then 2017. And those natural gas resources provide the reliability to MMPA's portfolio. Then we have the renewable resources, which is a mixture of wind, solar, and bioenergy. Those really help us control price, because they're fixed-price contracts. They're either fixed-price contracts or assets we own where the variable cost is zero. And so for all of those renewable resources, in this recent run-up of natural gas prices, which Andrew's going to talk about a little later, we aren't exposed to that risk by having those renewables in our portfolio, and so we've been very glad that we do. So I'm going to walk briefly through each of these resources, mainly to show you what MMPA has built and what, you know, what your ratepayers' money has helped build as a portfolio that's a part of the group that North St. Paul is a member of in the last 27 years now. So Minnesota River Station's a 49-megawatt gas turbine. It's a peaking plant, meaning it's designed to only run on the hottest days of the summer, so it doesn't run very often. It's a relatively more expensive plant to operate. It's less efficient. Again, that's a part, a normal part of any utility's portfolio. Owned by the city of Chaska, one of MMPA's members, leased to the agency until 2031. We have options to extend that until 2051, and we expect to do so. The largest plant in our portfolio, and sort of the centerpiece of our portfolio, is the Faribault Energy Park. This is a plant, if you're driving on 35 down towards Iowa, you can see on the right, sorry, the left as you're driving south. It's a 300-megawatt combined-cycle dual-fuel plant. So the dual fuel means it primarily runs on natural gas, but in one of those tanks you can see on the screen, there's also fuel oil. So if natural gas is interrupted for any reason, we can switch over and run on fuel oil. It's a fast-starting plant, which is valuable, because it means when the market needs energy, they look to us. It's high availability, meaning that it's not down for maintenance very often, and because that impacts how much capacity credit you get. So if you have a 300-megawatt plant, and you have, on average, a 10% outage rate, then when they're calculating up how much capacity you need to have, you only get 270 megawatts if you've got a 10% outage rate. And so our plant has a lower outage rate than that. And it's one of the, it's a GE plant, and GE has told us that it's among the best-performing plants in their whole fleet around the country. And it's also the center of MMPA's energy education program. And I want to pause in my description of the power plants just to talk about that for a minute. So, you know, we realize that our main role and what we're focused on is delivering that reliable, competitively-priced power. But we also know there's other ways that we're in your community. And one of the ways is our energy education program. And that's a fourth-grade program that's been going on for 10 years now. And we bring the kids to Faribault Energy Park. We partner with the Science Museum of Minnesota. And for people like East Grand Forks, where you can't really make a bus trip to Faribault and back in a day, we also can bring the program to you. Since launching the program 10 years ago, we've had 20,000 students participate in the program. And when you consider the fact that the total population of MMPA member cities is only about 163,000, I think that's pretty impressive. And we've recently, in the last three years, expanded it to include a high school program as well. And we're there, and that's at our Shakopee Energy Park plant, which will be the next plant I'll talk about. And there we go, much more in-depth than we do at the fourth graders. We talk about electric circuits, we talk about power generation. And then one of the things, I think, that's been the most popular, teachers and students, is we run a career panel. And we tell the students, you know, there's, and what is neat about it is we bring folks from our office, so people who dispatch power plants, you know, in sort of an operations room, people who maybe do conservation planning. And then our member communities bring folks from their community as well, so maybe a customer account rep or a line worker. And what we communicate to the students is there's multiple paths to great careers in the energy industry, some which involve, you know, maybe a four-year traditional, more traditional, you know, college degree. But there's a lot of great programs with a vocational program that can still lead to very rewarding and lucrative careers in the energy industry. And the students and teachers have both responded really well to that. So going back to our assets, the most recently added conventional resource in our portfolio is the Shakopee Energy Park. That's a 46-megawatt natural gas-fueled facility. And you can see on the right there, that little silver bullet-looking thing, that's liquefied natural gas as a backup fuel. So instead of using fuel oil here, we have a 99,000-gallon tank of liquefied natural gas. So if the local gas distribution company isn't able to supply gas on like a really cold winter day, we can switch over and operate from our own supply. And this plant was recognized as a Power Magazine 2017 Plant of the Year Award winner, which our plants have a history of receiving that recognition when they've gone into service. So now on to our renewables. First one we did was in 2011, the Oakland Wind Farm. It's a 44-megawatt wind farm in Blooming Prairie, Minnesota. It's been operating just over 10 years now. Probably the most innovative facility in our portfolio is the Hometown Bioenergy Project. This is an 8-megawatt project in La Sure, Minnesota. It uses anaerobic digestion technology. So the feedstock, the fuel, is agricultural waste processing products. The primary one's corn silage. We've also used pork byproducts from a nearby meat processor, potato processings, vegetable processings. As sad as it is to say, expired beer and soda have gone in. But those go into those two green tanks you see there, where microbes eat away and release biogas. And what's really neat about this facility, and the gas is burned in engines, and what's really neat is it's a renewable project, but those three white sort of domes you see, those are gas storage holders, or gas holders. And so we can store the gas there. So unlike solar, which you need the sun to be shining, or wind, you need the wind to be blowing, we can store the gas there and call upon this energy when we need it or want it, so it's dispatchable renewable energy, which is pretty unusual. Black Oak Wind Farm is our newest wind farm up until now. It's a 78-megawatt wind farm located near Sauk Center in Stearns County, went into service about six years ago. Buffalo Solar is our solar facility. It's a 7-megawatt solar facility located a couple miles north of downtown Buffalo, which is also an MMPA member. And then our newest project, the one that was causing those green bars to get bigger in those graphs we were looking at earlier, is the Walleye Wind Farm, located in Rock County. It's right in the southwest corner of the state. It's a 110-megawatt wind farm, currently under construction. This photo's from the groundbreaking back in June, and it's expected to be in service by the end of this year, and will add a significant portion of renewable energy to MMPA's portfolio.
Expecting to see a bunch of walleys sitting out there or something.
Yeah. So I'm going to walk through MMPA's financial results before I turn it over to Andrew to talk about the current business environment and our plans for the future. So MMPA's, and I'm going to focus on the last six years, just because it's sort of a reasonable timeframe, I think. MMPA's had very strong net income over the last six years. You can see there's been some variability, but in each year, income's been more than $10 million. And MMPA needs that net income to replace its capital assets and to support its bond payments. And that income produces a healthy cash position. And again, you can see some variability, but you can see again that cash has been in excess of $35 million each of the last six years. And there's been some buildups and then some decrease from 2019 to 2020. And that's because MMPA has used some of its cash to reduce its debt position. So 2016's the year that that Shakopee Energy Park, that natural gas facility, went in service. So we issued bonds in that, or sorry, it went in service in 2017, but we bonded for it in 2016 ahead of construction. And we were, our debt at that point was about $320 million. We've used our cash to work our debt down by $140 million in the last six years. We're at about $180 million as of the end of last year. And the benefit there is that by having, you know, less debt into the future, we have less cash requirements for debt service, less of a stream of fixed costs into the future, which means that we can have lower rates than we would otherwise. And again, we're very focused on rates at MMPA. And we've done all this while keeping rates lower than our competitive benchmark. And so this is, again, just looking at that same six-year period. And the other thing I want to point out here is how I mentioned that the last time we had sort of an upset in energy prices in the 2007, '08, 2007, 2008 timeframe, our rates went above Xcel. This graph also shows you the first six months of 2022, when energy prices had started to go up substantially. And this time, because of that resource, that portfolio of resources I showed you, we've been able to maintain that rate distance between us and Xcel, which we worked to do. So with that, I will turn it over to Andrew to talk about the current business environment and our plans for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm going to walk you through the business environment and then take you through our plans for the future. Let's start with natural gas prices, because natural gas is an input into energy production, and it is probably produces the last megawatts that get produced in the marketplace, which means it sets prices a lot of the hours during the year. High natural gas prices is what we hear these days, and it is truly that. Prices have been between $2 and $3. If you look at the beginning of 2020, all the way to the February 2021 event, that big spike you see where prices went to $10 is the winter storm Yuri. And then prices sort of normalized quickly after that, but then post-COVID recovery, as well as the war in Ukraine, took prices to another level. We're seeing $8 to $10 prices as we speak right now. High inflation is forefront in everybody's minds. Inflation is at historically high levels. At the preparation of this presentation, the numbers were above 9%. I think the numbers have come off slightly since then. We're at 8.3% right now. Interest rates are high. So there are a couple of interesting observations about this particular graph, on this graph. One of them is that the one-year U.S. Treasury is represented by the blue line, the 10-year U.S. Treasury, which is represented by the red line, and the 30-year U.S. Treasury represented by the green line, they have actually fully recovered from their pre-COVID levels now. This graph, we have an updated version of this, and you would see that they're actually surpassed their pre-COVID levels. Another thing that's interesting here to make is the difference between these graphs, the one and 10, and 10 and 30 years have completely disappeared. So you see that all of these three lines merge at the top, which means the first one-year, 10-year, and 30-year Treasuries are the same right now. We're facing an economic contraction. Prior to the first quarter of this year, the U.S. economy had some robust growth, as you can see with the orange graphs over there, it was between 2% and 6%. And then the first quarter this year, we experienced a 1.6% contraction in the economy, and the second quarter numbers are a 0.6% contraction. We're facing tight labor markets. At the time of the preparation of this presentation, again, the low unemployment rate was 3.6%, which is a very low number. There were 11.3 million open positions in the United States, and there's only 5.9 million unemployed people. So if you were to fill in every single position, you would still have over 5 million open positions in the United States today. So what does this business environment mean for our future plans? Our future plans consist of adding large-scale solar facilities, which are likely going to be interconnected at the transmission level. And we're going to be adding smaller-scale solar near-member communities. These will be likely interconnected at the distribution level of our member cities. We're going to continue to operate the three power plants, which are our conventional resources: gas plants, which is the Minnesota River Station, the Faribault Energy Park, and Shakopee Energy Park. And we're going to pursue fueling these resources with renewable natural gas, which I'm going to take a minute to explain in the next slide. MMPA, as David mentioned, is in a very unique position, at that one of its facilities, one of its member communities, city of La Sure, hosts a biogas facility today. It's an operating facility, it's been in service for nine-plus years. And today, we produce renewable, biogas at this facility. And as David said earlier, we put this into engines and we generate electricity from this. Our plans, in the second half of next year, is to clean up this biogas and to pipeline quality gas, and then make what is called renewable natural gas. How we do is, to do that is, we remove saloxanes, carbon dioxide, H2S, and volatile organic compounds from the biogas, make it cleaner, and then we put it into the pipeline. And our goal is to sell it into the renewable natural gas markets, or use this fuel at our conventional gas facilities, Minnesota River Station, Faribault Energy Park, and Shakopee Energy Park, which is very unique, fairly unique. And as Dave and I were talking yesterday too, we don't know of any other utility in the state of Minnesota that has this particular strategy, actually, to make their natural gas plants renewable by creating renewable natural gas themselves, at the scale that we're intending to do this thing. So, and our goal is to develop more RNG facilities, because we have one in operation, and we have a few that we're in the negotiation phase. So in order for MMPA to achieve this vision and execute on these plans, member contract extensions play a very important role. Most member contracts today run till 2050. Being in 2022, this limits the debt term to 28 years. Extending contracts to 2060 is what we're looking for, basically going from 2050 to 2060, so another 10 years. This would provide MMPA the flexibility to sell 30-year debt, and this would help keep member rates competitive. MMPA is in a great position. We have a quarter century of success. With the commercial operations of its Walleye Wind Farm that David mentioned, MMPA is going to be 42% renewable next year. We have rates below Xcel Energy. And MMPA has an approach for futures power supply that is fairly unique. As we said, this comprises of solar and renewable natural gas today. And then we intend to continue to have competitive rates, and extending contracts will keep these rates competitive. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Very good presentation.
How does North St. Paul fit in this whole scheme? I mean, I know we're not the largest. I mean, we're in the middle of the pack, or, if anyone would ask me.
Yeah, no, I would say that North St. Paul is probably right about smack in the middle.
Okay.
So of the 12 members, I think you're about probably seven, six or seven.
Okay.
So the largest ones are Shakopee, Chaska, Elk River, Anoka. Then after that, it's probably Buffalo and East Grand Forks. And then I think you guys, you guys in La Sure are about the same size in terms of peak demand.
Another question, you know, I'm outdoor knocking, people are asking me why our prices are higher than Xcel. Now, you just told us that we're more competitive and...
And that goes back to what I was saying when I first presented the rate comparison, that what we're showing are wholesale rates.
Right, yeah.
And so it's possible that at a retail rate level, there could be different results. And that has to do with, you know, a variety of things, the level of costs at the local utility level. You know, many of our members use the electric utility to help subsidize the general fund by having a transfer into the general fund, which I believe North St. Paul does. And so, you know, that helps you keep taxes lower, but you're, in essence, having your electric rates a little higher than they otherwise would be if you weren't doing that. And so those are some things that can lead to differences there. But, you know, I think that having the reliability and the local control of a municipal utility has served North St. Paul well for many years.
How many, how many other cities are you able to handle? I mean, what's your capacity? Are you able to handle more people coming onboard, or...
Yeah. So there are about four main power agencies in the state of Minnesota. So Minnesota has 100 and something cities that own their own utilities, as opposed to, you know, either members of co-ops or customers of an investor-owned, like Xcel or Minnesota Power. You know, our competitors, I'll say, the other municipal power agencies, their members have similar long-term contracts like we're talking about here. And so what it means is the universe of people for us to court is not very big. And usually, they're under long-term contracts, just like you guys are with us. And that's sort of the nature of the utility industry. That said, you've seen, we've taken advantage of opportunities where they are. There are a few other utilities in the state that are so sort of a little bit more, they've hit traditionally on a little bit more of an independent path. What's often different about them is that they typically own generation themselves in the community. And one of the reasons I think that MMPA has been so successful for the past quarter century is that all of our members' interests are aligned. So every member pays the exact same rates to MMPA. I mean, your average rate might be slightly different if your usage pattern is different, but the rate per unit of consumption is the same for every member. Our members don't own generation, and I think that keeping interests aligned has really allowed the board to be focused on that mission of providing reliable and competitively-priced power.
Do you only sell to these 12 communities, or do you sell to anybody else, Xcel or...
No. So our power supply is to those 12 cities. You know, the way the wholesale markets work, we sort of sell into the broader market, just like all utilities do, and then we buy out of that broader market. And that's the benefits of being in a power pool. So the whole state of Minnesota is part of a group called the Mid-Continent Independent System Operator. It's a 15 statewide power pool plus Manitoba, Canada. And so, you know, it means that if one of our generators is down, you know, we're not just in trouble. We can buy from the market if we need to. And similarly, we can provide to the market if we have more power than we have needs.
A couple more questions, but if Councilmember Wong... So if, you know, you hear the south and the west and the east, and, you know, they all are experiencing potentially blackouts, and they need the power. Are we sending power outside of the state then? Are we capable to do that?
I would say at a, you know, that's at a sort of a bigger level than MMPA is involved in, but it's more, that would be more at the MISO level, and MISO has certain import and export capabilities. And so, you know, if there's a system crisis, there are price signals that sort of come into play, and so there is some possibility to help with that. Again, that's helped, that's sort of at the larger, the wholesale of wholesale level.
But the problems out there, does that affect you guys?
So Andrew showed you gas prices that spiked up in winter storm Yuri. We saw power prices here go up, nothing like what they did in Texas. And again, you know, there were news articles about people without power for a week in Texas. And, you know, Texas has made the decision, it's mostly its own grid, it's called the Electric Reliability Council of Texas. And it's not really interconnected, so the, most of the bulk electric system in the United States is split into an east and a west. And there's, sort of near the Rockies, there's two big systems that are ultimately interconnected all together. And then there's Texas, which is sort of elected to keep itself separate. I think they've done that mainly to avoid federal regulation. But what that means is that they didn't have a big, as big a pool of resources, and so when things got really cold in February of 2021, they couldn't call on people the same way that we could here in Minnesota, because we're part of a larger group. And that's caused some of the reliability concerns that you've seen. Now, you know, that doesn't mean that something like that couldn't happen here, but it means it's less likely.
One last question. Can you explain in very simple terms, how do we get our power from all these plants?
Sure.
Because people always ask us, "We have our own power plant, or we have our own municipality power. Where does it come from? How does it get here?"
Yeah. So this is a finance guy's explanation of electric power transmission. But all of our power lines, excuse me, all of our power plants, well, except for Shakopee and Buffalo, are hooked up to the transmission system. That's the high-voltage system. It's kind of like the interstates of power. So a thing at 115 kilovolts and higher, so that's 115,000... So, a thing at 115 kilovolts and higher, so that's 115,000 volts, whereas that, that's 120 volts right there. And then those lines feed to substations where the voltage is then transformed down to, to distribution voltage, which is usually in the 12,000 to 13,000 volt range. And then that goes through feeders into our communities. And then you have the, the local transformers that transform it down into sort of the, the level that comes into your house, the... And then I mentioned that that was, most of our power plants worked up to those big systems. And then Shakopee and Buffalo are hooked up at that distribution level, sort of the, the larger city roads, but not the, not the individual lines into people's houses. And then, you know, in reality, electrons flow through the path of least resistance. So, the power that's being generated, for example, down at Faribault, may not end up at our member community's outlets. But again, that's the benefit of being part of an interconnected system, is that, is that we sort of get, we get credit for putting it in, and then we get to take it out.
Okay. Good.
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation. I'm just wondering what the interest around renewable energy is amongst students. I see that the education components are mostly at facilities that don't produce that, so I'm just wondering.
Went the wrong way here. I want to just take you back and... It's, it's a little hard to see here, but, my mouse isn't popping up. May I go point?
Just right here, too, a few.
Oh, okay. That might be easier. So, we, what we have here is, we have a solar panel here, and we have a wind turbine. And so, when we bring the kids into the energy education, we take them through three, three, three sessions, if you will, and a pizza lunch, which is very popular. But one of the sessions is about, is about the Faribault Energy Plant and how it makes power. And that, that session also takes into account how power is delivered. So, some of, your last question there, Mayor, we talk about how power flows through transmission and distribution lines and into your house. The other two sessions, one is on energy efficiency, and we talk, we, we bring a bike out, and that bike is hooked up to different levels of lights. So, we have some incandescent bulbs, and the kids get on the bike, and you have to bike really hard to light up the two incandescent bulbs. And then they flip a switch, and you're powering the two CFL bulbs, and it's much easier. And then you go to the LED bulbs, and it's even easier. And so, they're able to see that for the same amount of light output, the amount of work or energy that goes in is much less for that. And then the third station, we actually walk them out there on those paths you can see, and we, we do, we focus on renewable energy. And we talk about wind power, we talk about solar power. We give them a workbook that also walks them through the technologies, and we talk about how renewable energy is growing in Minnesota and the benefits of renewable energy. So, it's definitely something that's highlighted strongly in this program.
Thank you. And then I have a question in regards to the renewable natural gas conversion that you all are doing. Is that going to be just as reliable as natural gas? Because you said that's kind of your conventional, and that's your most reliable. So, is it going to have equivalent reliability?
Yeah. So, the plan is that we will generate that renewable natural gas, and we can then inject it into the natural gas transportation system. And we can either then, depending on whether it makes more economic sense or more money, we can either then sell it to others that want to buy renewable natural gas, or we could pull it back out at facilities like Faribault and run it there. And from that standpoint, it would have the same level of reliability.
Thank you.
Yeah, without the, without the commodity price risk.
Good. Got a question?
Nope. I have some comments. These gentlemen are rather modest, but they are the best in their field and their industry. What they have done over the years has been phenomenal. They are just such assets to have, the wholesale power agency, that they are, the decision that they make based off of, you know, best judgment, best guesses of what the future will be. Currently, by law, we have to have 20% of the power that we sell going to renewable. The last several legislative sessions, they're talking, what, 40 and even sometimes 50% in some of these places. These are really large investments that it takes for us to get there, to invest in whether or not it's wind or whether kind of renewable projects that we have. So, I definitely support the extent, extension of the contract tonight. But we're certainly very fortunate to have these gentlemen.
If you don't accept it, do we lose our power, like, for a couple of weeks, and we gotta figure out how to get power?
I've got a comment. And I remember you guys at a back a long time ago dinner. We couldn't come the last time because we had a city, city business.
That's what I heard, yeah.
I'm glad you came and gave us the information.
We appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, City Manager, Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Next topic is the proposed tax increment financing redevelopment district number 4-12, draft term sheet. And Michaela Hout is here from Baker Tilly to present for us, please.
Welcome, Michaela.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Here again to provide kind of an overview of the status of the tax increment financing request, maybe as background. The city did receive a request for tax increment financing for the proposed redevelopment of the properties, including the Lilly Building. Included within your packet for the workshop is a draft of the, the term sheet. We wanted to provide you with an opportunity of the current status of the tax increment request, the financial analysis related to that, and then consideration of next steps. So, the, in your draft term sheet, I'll walk through some of the highlights of the terms, and we'll address any questions that you might have on the project or the tax increment and financing request and next steps. So, in the project summary, again, we're looking at a redevelopment project. The developer that submitted the request is referred to as 2515 NSPLLC. The tax increment district would be Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment District number 4-12, again, for the Lilly Building redevelopment. There are four parcel IDs that would be included within this redevelopment project. And the, maybe a point of that point, the project or those properties have been inspected and determined to be substandard and eligible for, or qualifying for inclusion within a redevelopment district. So, the statutory background that allows for creation of the district has been met, and the city has that documentation. The redevelopment of those substandard buildings would include an approximate 82-unit apartment building that would consist of studio one and two-bedroom floor plans with a little bit of commercial or live workspace on the first floor. The total development cost estimate is about 25.6 million. And as part of the terms, the developer would agree to build the project in the, in the form of the final development plan as approved by council with an estimated cost of 25.6. Of course, we know numbers are still moving around, but that is anticipated to be the minimum investment for that site. Construction would commence in early 2023 with a projected completion in 2024. The developer, subject to approval of all the, the conditions, would consider demolition of the properties as soon as early, early winter, subject to the conditions. There are significant extraordinary costs related to redevelopment of the site, and those essentially are the barriers to allowing the redevelopment to occur. You'll see listed here, they're, they're the standard costs that you see for redevelopment districts. They include site improvements, we have acquisition, demolition, some earthwork grading, environmental remediation, parking improvements, public improvements, utilities, and then other redevelopment costs that are related to that site. The, related to that extraordinary costs, as part of the request for tax increment assistance, the developer has requested up to 90% of the tax increment revenues generated from the district, and they would be pledged. The total projected net estimated TIF, based on current assumptions, is about 9.95 million. Assuming a present value or discount interest rate of 4.25%, the value of that revenue stream to the developer is about 5.3 million. And on this point, what I want to point out is that, right now, we're still in preliminary tax increment revenue projections. We're still working with the county on an estimated valuation of this property. And right now, the, the value range is between, based on our assumptions, is between 16 million and 20 million. So, there is a range of projected revenues based on what the actual valuation of that property would be. So, what we want to point out here is the maximum that we would expect to see is up to 90% of the tax increment revenues, based on the higher valuation of about 250,000 per unit, so total valuation of 20 million. That is what would equal that 9.95 of net increment to the project. And when I say up to, we are still in negotiations with the developer to see if, if the, right now, the, the financial feasibility of the project is tight. The developer needs and has requested all of the tax increments, so that's where the up to 90%. There has been some discussions if we can reduce that percentage in the later years once the project is stabilized. So, there is potential that the blended percent pledged to the developer could be something less than 90%. But we wanted to share with you what we see as the maximum amount of assistance that could be provided based on the current assumptions and request. So, what's being requested of the city, again, is agreeing to invest in this project through the establishment of a redevelopment district, and again, agreeing to pledge up to 90% of the annual tax increments that would be generated over the life of the district for reimbursement of the identified TIF-eligible expenses. This would equate to the developer receiving up to 9.957 million, which does equate to a present value estimate of about 5.3 million. The, the maximum term for redevelopment district is 26 years, and that is 25 years of receipt after the first increment received. So, we would be looking at the maximum 26-year term for this district. Similar to other pay-as-you-go notes and agreements that the city has entered into, these would be semi-annual payments back to the developer, and they would coincide with the property tax payment schedules. So, the, based on the current assumptions of construction started in 2023, we would expect the first payment on the TIF note to be in August 1st of 2025, and then for, all the way through February 1st of 2051. Again, that's the maximum that we're looking at. This would be financed as pay-as-you-go, meaning the developer would be responsible for financing all of the costs, the entire 25.6 million upfront through a combination of debt and equity. And then the tax increment revenues would be pledged on that semi-annual basis to provide additional cash flow to repay the, the debt and the equity obligations at the, or the debt obligations and the equity investment that the developer is contributing to the Page two of the, of the term sheet, these are really more of the, the summary of the terms that would be within the agreement. And again, I think, you know, as, as moving forward, we're in the, still the earlier stages of negotiation, understanding what the developer has requested. And in their application, they have requested up to 6.1 million. That would be over that night, or, excuse me, over the 26 years with the 90% pledged. As further down within the terms of the agreement, again, with the pay-as-you-go financing, there would be conditions as far as what the property would be included within the tax increment district, what the minimum improvements would be, and that is the, the redevelopment and construction of the 80, approximate 82-unit multifamily building, the construction timeline, and the estimates for when they would complete, or commence and complete construction. And then if there's any look-back provisions or clawback provisions, we want to include, and that's really understanding that the terms of the deal, everything right now is based on assumptions, and that the developer is, is responsible for, basically, constructing the building, incurring those costs, and there's potential look-backs if they're, based on if there's a potential sale, eligible costs, and the total developer investment of being, what's being represented. And maybe the last point is, based on it being a redevelopment district, we are looking at it being exempt from the requirements of the Business Subsidy Act, and as this would be, the focus of the public assistance would be on the, the redevelopment of the site and the qualifying tax increment expenditures. So, that's an overview of the term sheet and what is being considered, and I guess, I get, as I said, in the early stages of the, the tax increment. And with that, I think I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the tax increment or the project or next steps.
How does this compare to what we just went through over at Sentinel? Is it very similar to, same type of development, same type of TIF?
Mayor, Members of the Council, a question regarding how this project compares to the Sentinel. The Sentinel was financed through a lot of negotiations and the project changing in scope from, started as a pay-as-you-go request. There were additional public improvements that were related to that project. So, that project was financed through the issuance of city bonds, in which point the city financed a portion of the costs upfront, and then will take the future tax increment revenues to repay that bond debt service payments. In this case, it's being proposed as pay-as-you-go developer finance, so the developer is taking on all the financing upfront, taking on the, the, the risk of the, of the tax increment being available for the debt service payments. So, it's primarily debt or developer finance as opposed to city financed for the project across the street.
It sounds like that's better for us, the city, to go that way.
In this case, for the financing of it being all private improvements, the, generally, the financing is somewhat contingent on what's, and how the project's being proposed, what's being included. And in this scenario, based on it being a private, all private project, no public components, that's correct.
Any other questions? It's complicated, can be complicated.
We're hoping this one stays on the simpler side.
We've got faith in you, Michaela.
Yeah.
Thank you. We've been through this with you before.
Dr. Waldron, I know you've been working on this project, and you're kind of our city liaison for this, or city go-to person. How do you feel that negotiations went? And how do you feel, you know, we are with this TIF?
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, I really feel good about this one. First of all, Michaela and Baker Tilly just do an excellent job digging into the details. So, when they tell you that they need the assistance and so forth, they've really dug into that and, and got it justified and, and figured it out. So, I, I think we're in good shape, and it's very positive to have that background that they, they give us, so we know what's being requested is indeed reasonable. The other part of that, as we move forward, on your agenda tonight, you have the component to set up or start moving forward with the hearing on the district. And then the only other thing to emphasize is that Michaela, at this point, gave you the top end of where we could end up, but that's not where we might end up in the end. So, what we're basically asking for tonight, in addition to moving forward with the, the district, is just that a sign-off by you that you're comfortable with these negotiating parameters, yet we'll still come back with a final development agreement at a later date for you to sign off on. But we just want to make sure you're comfortable at this point with the general parameters that we're looking at.
So, we can add this to the agenda for the...
I would recommend it if you're comfortable with, with the top end, and that is a, is an overall parameter, knowing full well that we come back with a financing agreement. That would be very helpful for us as we move forward.
Very comfortable adding this to the agenda?
This year, obviously, right, Michaela? Sooner the better.
That is correct. The anticipated public hearing on consideration of the tax increment district, and if, if we can get the, the terms agreed to, and potentially the TIF contract at the November 7th city council meeting. And that, of cour, and that is to allow the framework, the approval of the tax increment district, and would allow the developer to start, subject to other approvals, start to do demolition this fall, so they would be ready to go with as soon as the spring construction cycle's ready.
Okay. Lisa, are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Michaela.
Thank you.
Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Turnover, City Manager, Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Last topic is the capital improvement plan for 2023 to 2032. We have Finance Director Dan Winnick here to discuss that. We'll turn it over to you, Dan.
Welcome, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. First of all, I just have to, as I'm getting set up here, that's a really tough act to follow. MMPA, fantastic public speakers, did an excellent job, excellent program that they have. And then, you know, and then I gotta follow Michaela on top of it. That just, that just isn't the way things are supposed to be.
You get the boring stuff.
I get the boring stuff. So, what we're going to take a look at tonight actually has been attached two previous nights. We kind of briefly talked about the capital improvement program at a very high level. We kind of briefly talked about the capital improvement program at a very high level. We had Morgan kind of speak to it. And so if I can get this up here, it's really, to give you an opportunity, if you have any specific questions regarding the CIP, and really, even though it's a ten-year plan, it does have the two thousand and twenty-two, which was already approved for this year, kind of as a point of reference for you to look at. But then it has from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and thirty-two. We really will be approving the whole plan. And the reason for the approving of the whole plan is to allow our department heads opportunities to do planning, have more consistency to know what is going to be happening in the future. It allows me on the finance side to know if we're going to be going out for bonding and so forth, and making sure that we have, you know, when we're doing our financial planning on our, on future levies and so forth. So that's kind of why the whole plan is approved, but really the focus is on really the two thousand and twenty-three. And particularly, the reason for that is because it is going to be incorporated within all of the other budgets. So later on tonight, we'll be approving, we'll be requesting for approval of our preliminary levy, which includes the general fund, economic development authority, and the housing redevelopment authority levies. Again, that's the maximum. They can absolutely come down. This, the CIP, and all of the budgets will be formally approved and adopted on December sixth of this year. So there's still time that we're going to be having a lot of discussions. We still have to go through, you know, all of the enterprise funds and a number of our other budgets. We can also relook at the general fund at that point in time, too. Two of our department heads were not able to be here tonight, so if there's any specific questions either for our police chief and/or fire chief, we will definitely take those down and revisit those. But they play kind of a smaller part in our whole overall plan. They really are more focused on the equipment, the vehicle and equipment component of the plan. The rest of it really unfortunately falls underneath, for a large part, our public works, with the exception of items that are from the electric department. So again, I'm just going to give the first summary part to it of how the capital improvement plan is developed and laid out. The, I think, the first three pages are summary pages. It'll show the vehicle and equipment. It'll show from twenty-two is more of a courtesy of what was approved and what's in our current budgets. And then from two thousand and twenty-three all the way to two thousand and thirty-two, it'll have the departments on the left-hand side, so Police Department, Fire Department, Street Maintenance Department, Urban Forestry Departments, General Parks. And then it'll also have, for those items are coming out of the equipment fund, it'll show the fund balance at the end of two thousand and twenty-one, and then it'll show what is anticipated, both on a funding side to it and an expenditure side, and showing you what the balance moving forward for the next, actually, it'll be eleven years to take you through, two thousand and thirty-two. There's also the internal service or the enterprise funds of water, wastewater, service water, and electric that are showing up there. You'll see that format on each and every one of them. You'll see building and facility improvements. You'll see the capital technology component, pavement preservation, ponds, natural resources and environment, parks, playgrounds, paths, and open space, street and utility reconstruction, utility infrastructure preservation. And so it'll show all of those, and then after that will be the specific detail of each one of the plans with a little description of the, either the project or the piece of equipment or so, or so forth, and then an estimate of the cost. The spreadsheet does a very conservative, even though you just heard earlier, it is true, right now we're at an eight point three percent inflationary rate. Hopefully, it doesn't last forever. This is built on only a two and a half percent escalation. We're also experiencing long delays of getting any type of equipment. Vehicles can be out, you know, anywhere between twelve to eighteen months. Brian's experience on the electric side for, I think it was transformers, that can be out two to three years. So we're still dealing with a lot of the supply chain issues, the inflation. Feds are meeting today and tomorrow with the anticipation of raising the rates again to get inflation under control. So there's a lot of different factors. That's where the two thousand and twenty-three is kind of our best guess of where we're at. The future years are, again, really subject to a lot of flexibility and a lot of changes and parameters. So we've used the two and a half percent escalation. If we were to look in the past twenty years, outside of the past couple of years, anywhere between two to three percent escalation would have been fine. So that's kind of what we're, you know, we've maintained that at this point in time. But, so really going to turn it over to ask the council if there's any specific questions that they have on the plan itself. The next process after this is this will go in front of the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission will make any changes or recommendations for that. We certainly, at the city council level, can revisit this at any point in time as we go through more of our budget talks for the remainder of this year. And again, on December sixth is when we'll actually approve this. Any changes that we make, I will then incorporate them into our budgets to show you the impact that it'll have on any of our budget, you know, from the changes that we make, if we ended up deleting something, but...
Again, this is not our first time seeing this.
It's not your first time seeing this, and I just wanted to make sure, really, it's to make sure that city council is comfortable with the plan. And again, last year was the first time that we've really taken a shot at really building a totally comprehensive capital improvement plan. Up until that point in time, it really was more of streets, and you would see, you know, equipment and vehicles coming just on a one-year look. We're trying to make it more incorporated. And just like we were, we had talked before, we keep adding things. There's still needs. I think I had talked a little bit of it at our last budget meeting, that we really do need to do a facility assessment, and that information needs to be incorporated into here. There's a spot for it. We just haven't really done an adequate job of looking at a twenty-year look at our facilities and making sure that we're identifying parts that need to be replaced. And if we're looking at it from that standpoint, then we can end up coming up with some sort of way of a funding source and so forth. So this is, like I said last year when it kind of introduces, this is a living document. This continuously will change. Unfortunately, in the times that we're living, this thing changes all the time as far as estimates and so forth because of the inflationary factors. But with that, again, really going to turn it over and ask some questions if we can answer them. I've got Morgan and Ron and Randy here to answer a bulk of the questions. Anything related, again, to police and the fire, I'll take those down, and we'll have them addressed, those department heads address them in a future time.
Any questions for Dan?
The truth in taxation, that's in December, correct?
Yeah, and tonight we'll make a motion, in addition to approving the three levies, we'll also make a motion to adopt, I think it's December sixth, as our public hearing date, yes.
Yeah, I have several questions.
That's good.
Sure. Yeah, so I was looking at the trade-in values for a lot of the vehicles, and they look to be about three thousand dollars, which for this economy seems kind of low, considering the supply of vehicles. A lot of people are saying it's cheaper to buy new compared to used, so I'm just wondering what the, if, where that number comes from.
Yeah, and a lot of the three thousand estimated trade-in values are in our police vehicles. So when a police vehicle ends up becoming, you know, if we're going to decommission it, there's a lot of removal of equipment and so forth that needs to take place in that vehicle. We don't, we don't repair the vehicle afterwards, so it actually diminishes the resale value of that, of that vehicle in comparison to if, you know, like my own personal vehicle. If I were to turn, turn that in right now, I would get probably a better price than any time because of the inflation and so forth. But, so again, we try to take a kind of a conservative approach, conservative approach, so we're not trying to overestimate the trade-in value, and if we don't get it, then we end up having a hole in our, in our budget, and we're not able to fund, you know, the replacement of the vehicle.
I assume it goes to some sort of auction?
Yes.
Or do you just, or do you trade in and...
It depends. A really good example is, is our public works director, Ron, really does an excellent job and really puts the time in. And he'll look at what that trade-in value is versus what's on the market, and he'll make that decision. He won't take the easy way out, is the bottom line, and he'll make that decision and say, hey, I'm going to put that out, I'm going to deem it as surplus, we're going to put it out on the internet, and we're going to sell that. And he does a lot better than what he would get at just a pure trade-in on a new, you know, on the vehicle at the time of purchase. So he does look at that on a continuous basis. For the police, in the time that I've been here, last year, we had a vehicle that was wrecked that ended up getting donated for a very good purpose to, to a trade, I think, to a trade school for them to kind of repair and to kind of help. I haven't seen any of the vehicles actually being sold at this point in time. What our police chief has done up until this point in time is kind of repurposed that the vehicle that's being replaced, it may end up being a CSO vehicle for a while. So he may end up running that out to, so these are on a, I believe, on a five-year lifecycle. He may end up using it for the next three to five years as a CSO vehicle, getting the most value out of that vehicle before then it's, it's gone. So then again, now we're looking at a ten-year time period when the vehicle finally goes. Three thousand dollars probably is, is more, more reflective of what that ten-year vehicle actually would get.
I've also noticed that all of the vehicles are SUVs, and with gas prices having gone up significantly, I mean, they've dropped down. What are the considerations around SUVs versus like, you know, your four-door vehicles? So that's one question I do have.
And I do believe this past year, there's, in two thousand and twenty-two, there's four vehicles that are going to, that are in the process of being replaced. Again, there's a long lead time. I believe that Phil actually wasn't going with four SUVs. He was actually looking at one being a pickup truck and then one being a four-door sedan. I believe the sedan had such a lead time on to it that it was pushed out somewhere towards the end of, or middle, towards at least the middle or the end of next year. So he is looking at other variations instead of just the traditional SUV. And usually, they've, in the past, have always gone with the, I should, can I say brand name Ford, the Ford Explorer has been what the typical SUV is.
Thank you. And then I'm curious on the replacement of the vehicles. So there are other vehicles that are, have been in service before and look like they may be up for replacement, but it says not applicable. Can you, can you explain that to me a little bit?
Because that's, that's where I was talking about that, what Phil has been doing, and it's actually been going before Phil took over as the police chief, is that they'll replace the vehicle, but they'll repurpose that vehicle for either a CSO or for some other utilization. So the city still has ownership of that vehicle. It's already been truly replaced, and so when it has no more of a need, it'll be deemed as a surplus piece of equipment and then auctioned off at that point in time.
Yeah, just one question is, you know, I'm looking at the long term, and it seems like every five years, there's a, there's four vehicles that are being purchased. Is it possible to have it staggered, so it's not just one large sum of money every five years, but staggered on a, you know, annual basis? So...
Absolutely. Yeah.
A little bit more...
Yep, absolutely. I'll talk to Phil about that and see what he's open, but yeah, we absolutely could look at that.
Thank you. And looking at the radios, it looks like there's a lot of different needs for radios in different departments. Is there opportunity for like bulk pricing if we just do it all swoop?
Yeah, and I think the, like, the handhelds was an item that came up last year. It's actually in the twenty-two budget. It was actually needed for both police and for fire, and they did purchase them together. So yes, that is exactly what they were trying to do is get a better pricing. Many of those items are off of the state master contracts, so the pricing is pretty much set. And some of the vendors that are on master contract don't allow or don't give a different incentive if you, you know, are over a certain threshold or not.
Thank you. And then it looks like also some of the requests are like rifle replacements. My understanding is that there has been, they're really old. I'm just wondering from that time to now, how often or how necessary they've been in use in all fourteen of them.
Yeah, and that's a very good question. Now, when I'm going to defer to our police chief, he did a write-up for justification for those, but I'm going to leave. There are some newer items that are on for the two thousand and twenty-three. There's rifles, there's ballistic helmets and PPE, there's solar-powered stop signs, and then the drones that we discussed at the last meeting. But those are the three items I really would like our police chief to address at a future time.
Thank you. In terms of the parks section, I see that there's a need for the Silver Lake bathrooms. And then all other buildings are more HVAC-focused? Just curious on what that updated.
Can you just point which page or...
Um...
Oh, I see.
Nine of seventeen in your...
I will, I will defer this to our public works director, Ron Ritchie.
Good evening, mayor and council. So what is the number that you're looking at, or it's Silver Lake bathrooms? Just for like a rehab, and the stalls are all rusty and falling down, and we're just going to do, kind of do a remodel with our people, you know, our public works guys over the winters, what that is for.
Okay, gotcha. And then the, the...
over the winters, what that is for.
Okay, gotcha. And then the, the HVAC systems for all of our buildings or all the park buildings, it looks like is also being revisited?
Yeah, I guess what is, I just want to see what we're looking at here. Yeah, I believe those were numbers that were put in previously just for like placeholders, for us to look at, to look at that stuff if we needed, like Casey Lake probably doesn't need anything, but just any needed repairs or maintenance or anything that we would have to do on any of that stuff.
Okay, so it's a little bit more general then?
Yeah, yeah. And some of these numbers were put in, I'll have a way better grip on this next year because some of these numbers were put in, I think, as placeholders in the previous year. Just, you know, for, so some of the stuff we looked at and we're like, we'll leave it there, we'll see where we're at, and kind of just, you know, review everything in these buildings, so.
Thank you.
And, and this section is really what I'm talking about, that we really should have a facility assessment being done on our facilities, and that means all of our park facilities in addition, and that we would have a much better picture of what the real cost is and timing of, of when replacement would be recommended. When I was with Ramsey County, we hired a consultant to do it for all of the county-owned facilities, which, you know, is, you know, quite an extensive job to do, but it allows you the opportunity to do a better job of planning. And then it also, when you're having a consultant look at the, the facility planning, it also helps you a little bit more of looking at things from an operational and preventative maintenance component to it too, which is something that, you know, we, we really need to, to look at because if we can do a better job in preventative maintenance, we usually can, you know, extend the useful life of a piece of equipment. Again, if we don't, we usually shorten the life of, of that piece of equipment, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan because we don't want things falling apart, and like we've kind of learned with the community center. It's like a house, you have to keep maintaining it, so that's a good plan for the future. So thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Yes, that's a very good point, and that's, and that's what eventually, this, this has to be a very robust capital improvement program, and, and it, it does. It takes a lot of time for our department heads to, to look at, to review, but on the flip side to it, it allows them to plan for the future, and it allows us to then plan that finance, make that financial plan, no different than when we saw MMA talk about, you know, extending it for another 10 years because then that allows them to, to do bonding of 30 years. And again, a very good presentation. District Energy, who's in the downtown St. Paul area, did that with Ramsey County and a number of their other, that they had contracts with, you know, in, in district cooling and district heating. They were looking at financing opportunities because they're very capital intensive, and so they came and they asked to have all of their agreements extended. So this is, this is nothing that's, that's out of the ordinary to see a utility company coming and doing that.
I'd like to add something to that, and it's another layer of complication that we're having during these pretty unprecedented times is not only trying to pinpoint of what the cost of a replacement will be and how far out it is, they're flat out just canceling orders, saying that we just don't know when we can do it. Or if it's a state bid contract, they're saying the money is not there because that, they usually sell that at a pretty low rate of return. So what they're doing is they're canceling those orders and they're allowing the higher end to be purchased and bought that way so they can make more money. So I know PD has experienced that, Public Works has experienced that. I talked to a vendor that deals with bucket trucks, and Altech had over 4,000 bucket trucks, the orders canceled because they just didn't even know when they could even get the trucks out. It's just been amazing trying to figure this out and try to budget for it.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to throw you with a question that, you know, you, you asked us to do things, you know, at the last couple of budget meetings, so.
Are you kidding me?
I want you to, so when you go home at night, what keep, what keeps you up the most when you look at city finances and budget and capital improvement plan? You know, you're kind of in the trenches and understand it. That's kind of my question to you.
Yeah, by nature, I'm an insomniac, so, no, I, no, truthfully, when I, what keeps me up at, at times is that, one, and going to play because it's absolutely true and it's happening right now, is that this city has done an excellent job in trying to push that redevelopment in our downtown area. Our downtown area is, is crucial for this, for the city. It, it offers just a great opportunity. It's a separate identity. There's not a lot of cities that, you know, that offer that, and especially being in, with having all the amenities of the Twin Cities. So what keeps me up at, at night is, you asked our consultant, Michaela, about some of the past TIF districts. A fantastic project that, that was done in the Sentinel Building, but the city took an extreme amount of risk. We bonded for that money. If the TIF money does not come in on time, we still owe. That isn't anywhere in our, our financial forecast to absorb that additional payment of the bond service debt onto, onto that. So when you have an opportunity to, to do a development, and, and I'll just speak my own, my own opinion, that is really a very attractive from an aesthetic standpoint, and you have the developer looking at not asking the city for additional funds or for the city to upfront the costs, in other words, for the city to take on risk. The developers taking their risk. I like that part to it, and especially if you, if you really believe in the but-for clause for, for TIFs. So what keeps me up at night is I'm worried about the TIF coming in for that one project. I am worried about us building a, a accurate, a comprehensive capital improvement plan that we are addressing all of the needs, not just the needs of City Council that, that comes, but all of our commissions that are coming. We have a park commission that's, that does excellent work, our, our council, that's our culture council that does excellent work. They all have plans, but all of those plans cost money. And so it's really this to be addressing all of those needs and then coming up with the plan. Now, what helps me sleep at night is the support that the City Council has done, and I absolutely mean it. This is my second budget cycle with the City Council. You have asked absolutely fantastic questions. You have done an excellent job of listening to staff, and every department had, had an opportunity to come up, even to this point, and will come up again before the end of the year, to, to talk about their needs. And you asked the tough questions, and some were passed, some, some weren't, but you didn't look at things just from a bottom-line standpoint and say, hey, 0% levy, not moving off it, I don't care what the need is. You realize that there's needs in the city and that we need to improve and to become a better community and, and be more responsive and keep our extraordinary services moving forward. So I'm encouraged by all of the support from the City Council, but those are probably my two biggest areas that keep me up at, at night, and it's some of the, the past risks that the city has assumed, and then to make sure that we're, we're really building a comprehensive plan so then we can build a financial plan to back that up and, and show the City Council. But I, I do have to say, you know, Mayor, you have been a great leader of this city, and I have to, you, I, I have 10 minutes, so I'm only going to take a couple of minutes.
I didn't pay him to say this.
My first, my first, my first, my first day on, on the job here at the city, the mayor came in towards, after everybody, virtually everybody had left, I think Brian was, was still around, and the mayor comes in, and I had seen pictures, but I did, when he came in, he came in so quick, I didn't really catch, and, and he told me, what did you tell me?
I was the outhouse inspector for the city.
That's, that's, but he has been somebody that you can talk to all the way through and very supportive, and I found that with each and every one of the council members. And I, and I see it with Councilmember Peterson, there's just a level head, Councilmember Wong. I won't speak to the ones that aren't here because they're not here, but there's a level, a level head, there's a, there's a, there's a passion for the city, there's a, there's definitely a reasonableness, and, and the questions are fantastic, and, yeah, so I mean, gives me great confidence because I know that there's an opportunity to, to work, and then our city manager has just been a breath of fresh air in both his interim role and, and two times, and now is as permanent, that he's somebody that I can go and, and I'm getting long-winded now. You're not going to ask me any more questions, but no, he, he's somebody that I can, I can vet things out with and throw some different ideas and concepts and, and so, but no, I think the city actually is in, is in very good hands and the future looks very bright, and not to push anybody, but I, I really do like this, this development that is being proposed, so.
Thank you for all the kind words, and I just had to put you on the spot.
Oh, jeez.
Payback, so.
Well, there will be other budget workshops this year, so more, more activities.
Go ahead, no.
Oh, yeah, I was just wondering, in terms of like the commissions and wanting to have, you know, a lot more comprehensive CIP, is there some sort of expectation or process this year for those commissions that need to, that they need to know or budget for?
For, for this year? Basically, what's been incorporated from the commissions has really come from WSB has incorporated because they work with all the various commissions. So, so Morgan has been kind enough to incorporate that we had a meeting, and, and he incorporated and has done just a phenomenal job of incorporating into our, our capital improvement program. I have, you know, spoke with some members of the Parks Commission. In the future, for next year's, I, I really would like to, to get them early in the year involved with the planning and the budget. You know, the EDA budget is, for, for the most part, developed by their, the Chair of the EDA, and, you know, but I would really like to be going to each and every one of these commissions and, and having discussions. I've been to a couple of them, one I've been invited to, to go and, and answer any of their questions from a financial standpoint and, and then kind of help for, for planning in the future.
I think that's a really good idea, a process to, to go through. Okay, you're good, good, everyone's good. All right, anything else?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Nothing else? Motion to adjourn. So moved by?
So moved.
Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Peterson. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. We are adjourned for about six minutes.